With three foot shoulders on each side and provides an ideal surface for wheeled vehicles to travel at speeds between twenty and thirty-five miles per hour. Bike safety is encouraged by the Bicycle Coalition of Massachusetts. Statistics proves that there are in fact more accidents along bike paths than on roads due to the incompatibility of wheeled vehicles and pedestrians. Although the injuries are not generally as serious to the bikers, pedestrians are at greater risk. What safety practices are recommended for rail trail users? During September and August of this past summer alone, there were five incidences of rape, assault, and murder on bike paths. Therefore, the Bike Safety Commission recommends that women and children not travel alone on bike paths or play near bike paths because of this risk. What do local police departments recommend for protection? In Weston, the Chief of Police has gone on record that the town would need four additional people to manage the rail trail, requiring an additional $1,000 of annual expenditures. I ask that you vote no on this motion number four. Thank you.
I'll recognize the lady at the pro microphone in the front.
Thank you, Renee Robbins, 90 Main Street, and I am in a butter. I'd like to make two additional brief points. One is that the Minuteman Rail Trail that runs through Bedford and Lexington is the single most heavily-used rail trail in the country because of its location, because of its commuter access to the L-Wife T Station, and because it goes through a much more heavily-populated and densely populated area. And I don't think comparisons of future use of the Aspit River Rail Trail to the Minuteman Rail Trail are appropriate. My second point is simply to say that, again, I am in a butter. They're not asking to build a jail in my backyard, or an incinerator, or even a shopping center, or an office park. This is a path where people are going to walk, and bike, and roller skate. And I am in a butter. It goes through the back of my property, and I do not have a concern about it. When I first heard about it, I was excited about it, and I remain excited about the prospect of having this kind of facility where people will be able to get off of the streets and ride their bikes safely. I encourage everybody to vote in favor of it, and I would like to move the question.
I really didn't say this before, but what we don't allow is people to make a speech and then move the previous question.
My apologies.
It was a nice try, though. It would've passed, by the way, but it's not appropriate.
I'll let someone else.
Okay, I'll give it to the gentleman on the con side.
Good evening, fellow town residents. My name's John Tackus, and I'm neither an expert spokesperson nor yet to get excited. Myself and my family live at 78 Main Street where the proposed trail would run in the back of our property. What I'd like to speak to you about this evening is the inevitable increase in crime that the proposed path would bring to our town, and more specifically to my neighborhood. While ARRT and those in favor of the rail trail may view these concerns as alarmist or exaggerated, the facts and data concerning crime on public bike paths are indisputable. National statistics from the Public Safety Committee identified numerous incidents of serious crimes on bike paths throughout the last several years. In numerous communities throughout the country, the inherent dangers and increased risks of crime along these routes has led local police departments to issue warnings to their citizens, especially women, children, and elders, not to travel these bike paths alone. I have in my hand a stack of both newspaper and magazine articles informing the public about incidents of rapes, murders, stabbings, and assaults, all of which have occurred on bike paths. And while these statements and statistics may sound sensationalized to you, let me assure you that they're not. But whether we're talking about serious violent crimes, which happen, but granted, are not everyday occurrences, or whether we're talking about incidents that are typical each and every day, incidents such as vandalism, property damage, public urination, after-hour loitering, and alcohol and drug use, make no mistake, crime along the bike path will be a reality. And while you may believe that these incidents are few, far between, and far away, let's take a look closer to home at the Minuteman Bike Path which travels through Lexington, Bedford, and Arlington. Arlington alone has reported more than 450 incidences where the police were called to the Arlington portion of the bike path. Some of these incidences included assaults, indecent and lewd behavior, fights, vandalism, and nearly a hundred calls reporting groups of teens hanging out and causing problems. In Lexington, 25 percent, let me repeat that, 25 percent of abusers to the path have experienced vandalism to their property, while an even greater 50 percent have experienced unwanted and illegal activities in and around their properties. And as a result of such incidents, each town along the path has been forced to increase the police presence and patrol of the path at their own expense. Now, we can be foolish and try to convince ourselves that crime won't happen here, but knowledge and experience tells us that it will. We know from statistics that only about 10 percent of any given town's residents will use the trail, yet we also know that the Minuteman Trail hosts approximately 2 million visitors each year. That means we'll be inviting an awful lot of strangers, granted, lots of good people, but also some bad people into our town, our neighborhood, and our backyards. Please give these facts some serious consideration before making a decision this evening.
The lady at the back microphone on the pro side.
Carol.
Yes, what is your point of order, sir?
Close off the debate and vote. I make a motion that we close all debates and vote on the issue.
I'm sorry, I can't take that as a point of order. That's not a correct point of order. You would have to await your turn, and when your turn comes, you can move to close off debate, but it isn't your turn now. It's the lady's turn at the back.
Carol Holly, 39 Pope Road. I live on Pope Road. I've lived there for over 20 years. We have motorcyclists, we have bicyclists, we have pedestrians, we have litter, we have vandalism. I would like Pope Road to go away so I can live in peace and quiet. I feel that's a parallel issue to what I'm hearing regarding the rail trail. Thank you.
Now, if you were standing at the microphone now, there's no other person standing on the con side, you could make that motion, but you're not, so I'll recognize Ann Fattin at the front microphone.
I feel tremendous pressure to move the, and I didn't come to do that. Oh dear, I know that's what you want me to do.
No, no, listen, you do what you want to do. Far be it from me to try to influence you.
I wanted to say two things, Ann Fattin, Fort Pond Road. We are one of the most popular jogging, biking, rollerblading spots in Acton, and I absolutely love it. And secondly, I don't think that the Minuteman Bike Way would be so overcrowded if we built these facilities all around the state, and I think it's time to do our part.
Gentlemen at the back on the con side.
Motion to vote, please.
Just say, move the previous question, is that your motion? It is, I know it is, but, okay. Do I hear a second on the gentleman's motion to move the previous question? I hear a second. All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Debate is cut off.
Can you clarify?
I'm sorry?
You said earlier that this required a two-thirds vote.
It does.
According to the warrant, it says it's a majority vote.
Let me refer to the town council one more time.
Thank you.
Two-thirds? And why?
It is a two-thirds vote, both because it authorizes eminent domain, although it probably won't be necessary, and because it authorizes borrowing.
Now, I knew that. But I always liked Mike DeWern, his feet. All right, we'll now vote under the motion as read under Article Four. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Tell us, come forward, please. Obviously, I couldn't tell what the vote was.
Hey Doug, I'm the front, I'm changing my mind. There's no other thing, go. I'm gonna say that my apple might be in the wrong.
Neither do I, man, I tell you. Are we ready, Val? All right, we're ready to vote, and I would remind you that to have your vote counted, you must show these little pink cards. So we're going to take the pro votes, the yes votes first. All in favor of voting yes onto this article, please stand and show your little pink card so that the tellers can count you.
I think I have it too.
Neither do I, man, I tell you.
And I would remind you that to have your vote counted, you must show these little pink cards. So we're going to take the pro votes, the yes votes first. All in favor of voting yes onto this article, please stand and show your little pink card so that the tellers can count you.
I think I have it too.
Is he rolling around?
Well, if he can find him, it's not, John, don't worry about it. Go ahead, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, we're ready to vote. And I would remind you that to have your vote counted, you must show these little pink cards. So we're going to take the pro votes, the yes votes first. All in favor of voting yes onto this article, please stand and show your little pink card so that the tellers can count you.
Where's Roland now? Is he rolling around? I wouldn't do that now if I saw him.
Well, if he can find him, it's not, John, don't worry about it. Go ahead, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, I got my big one, it's not gonna be a two-nighter. Any trend?
No, I don't think so. I think this is an aberration.
I'm gonna think about for nine years, running the article four, so I thought we'd get up to an article, but it'll be out of the first two. About a minute, hold down.
It will be. Okay, we're ready for the nay vote. Would all opposed? Would all opposed, please stand with your little cards.
I don't know for one now, I think it's pretty close.
Test. It's about 95.
I figure about 165 or so, a little better than that.
170, I believe, doesn't matter.
Okay, we have the result. There were 489 people who voted, 335 people voted yes, 154 people voted no. The article has passed. Motion has passed. We'll now move to Article Five, the Quinn Bill. We're gonna put this one up on the screen for you. I'm gonna wait for the people to leave the hall. Was it something I said? Okay, I will read the motion under the Quinn Bill, we'll put it on the screen for you. There's a change from what you see on the screen right near the end of it, but it's a change which makes it legal. I hate to say it's inconsequential, but it doesn't change very much. The motion under Article Five is Mr. Hunter moves that the terms of the Police Collective Bargaining Memorandum of Agreement dated March 6, 1998 are approved, and that in order to satisfy the terms of the agreement, the selectmen are authorized to petition the General Court for an act to repeal Chapter 493 of the Acts of 1938, and further, that the town accept Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108L, the Quinn Bill, effective upon the enactment of legislation by the General Court to remove the position of police chief from the provisions of civil service. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Hunter.
work. Some of you will probably remember that a few years ago, I appeared before you presenting an article that the town manager had requested to take the police chief out of civil service. The rationale was that the police chief, as one of the town manager's management team, should be selected with a process similar to the other managers rather than just being the person who scored the highest on a civil service test. I, and the town manager incorrectly, saw this largely as a management issue, and were told rather politely, but firmly, I thought, while you're voting against me, that it really was a bargaining issue, should be discussed with the union. We took that to heart, and as it happened, the other half of the duet, if you will, the police union, Fred Rensseler and his crew were in last year to ask the town meeting to adopt the Quinn Bill, and having to some degree learned our lesson the first time around, Nancy Tavernier led the presentation against, and I spoke from the floor and suggested that this really belonged in collective bargaining, and let us see if we can't work that out. Now, I can't represent to you with any honesty that I worked it out. I didn't do anything except, along with my other fellow select people, backbite the town manager a little bit while he toiled in the vineyard. But the town staff and the police union worked out a very mutually beneficial agreement, and a very complex agreement, which is intertwined. This was the best graphic we could come up to. I suggested something surrounded by a chain, but I think the town manager thought that was a little too ominous, talking about a police matter. So this is supposed to be two people in a boat rowing. That's the modern art interpretation, I guess. And it's intended to demonstrate that we have a two, the agreement, I might diverge from it, the collective bargaining agreement has been worked out between the town and the police union, covers three years, and covers wages, and covers some seniority matters, and covers some other things, including, by the way, an adjustment on the ratio of payment on the health plan to 85-15, whereas it used to be 95-10. But the principal thing we're here to talk about tonight, of which we need the approval of town meeting, because these are town meeting matters, is the Quinn Bill and the taking the chief out of civil service. One thing that the union wanted, one thing that management wanted, and we have met in the middle. Now, those of you who remember the presentations, pro and con, last year on the Quinn Bill, know that the town, or will recall that the town raised several objections to the adoption of the Quinn Bill, and we are satisfied that those objections have now largely been worked out. It was a difficult matter for the police union, who dealt with us, I believe, in the utmost good faith, because they have a group of officers who are going to benefit by the Quinn Bill. You'll remember that that's a program, I believe Quinn was the legislator who recommended, I haven't looked that up. But in any event, it's a state program which you can adopt whereby there are rather substantial bonuses awarded or available to those officers who have furthered their education, and it's one of those wonderful things where the legislature's supposed to fund half of it, and we fund half of it, and you know, sometimes the state half doesn't always quite work out. But we've worked out an arrangement whereby we think we can meet our concerns in that regard, the police union has agreed to indemnify us in that regard, and we can handle it if there's questionable legality, I believe, on wage adjustments. The police union has worked very hard on this, and has worked with us and worked out a wage package which it has felt addresses the fact that some police officers get a Quinn Bill incentive and some won't. This is literally one of those arrangements where nobody left the table completely happy, and that by definition is a good compromise. Now, I'd be happy to answer questions, but I would remind you that this is, you know, it's considered to be death, literally, to stand here before town meeting and say, "You can only do this or that." Normally, it's a very poor thing to say for a presenter, because the spirit of New England town meeting is independence, and if I say this or that, somebody else is gonna invent a third way. But because of the way this is structured, this is one of those rare occasions when I must say that. If somebody liked the Quinn Bill but didn't like taking the chief out of civil service, or vice versa, you can't diddle with a deal. It's the deal or no deal, and that is your choice. I mean, you can have a deal or no deal, and the resolution, if there's no deal, is that the collective bargaining agreement collapses, and we go back to the table and have at it again, and I don't think anybody can predict what the outcome of that sort of dynamic is. We heartily recommend that the town meeting adopt this motion, committing us to go and get the appropriate legislation to take the chief out of civil service. The rest of the department will remain in civil service, only the chief will be out of civil service and will be selected based on the usual management criteria for a department head, which will certainly include being a police officer and having adequate skills in that regard, and I would suggest, in my view at least, that that can be better determined than by a paper, solely by a paper test. Fred Rensseler, who is not a citizen, registered to vote and so forth, is here, and if the meeting wants him to ask any questions, I will then ask the moderator to allow, to have you vote to allow. Uh, one thing that the union wanted, one thing that management wanted, and we have met in the middle. Now, those of you who remember the presentations, pro and con, last year on the Quinn Bill, know that the town, or will recall that the town raised several objections, uh, to the adoption of the Quinn Bill, and we, we are satisfied that those objections have now largely been worked out. It was a difficult matter, uh, for the police union, who dealt with us, I believe, in the utmost good faith, because they have a group of officers who are going to benefit by the Quinn Bill. You'll remember that that's a program, um, I believe Quinn was the legislator who recommended. I haven't looked that up. But in any event, it's a state program which you can adopt whereby there are rather substantial bonuses awarded, uh, are available to those officers who have furthered their education, and it's one of those wonderful things where the legislature's supposed to fund half of it, and we fund half of it, and, you know, sometimes the state half doesn't always quite work out. But we've worked out an arrangement whereby we think we can meet our concerns in that regard, the police union has agreed to indemnify us in that regard, and we can handle it, if there's questionable legality, I believe, on wage adjustments. Uh, the police union has worked very hard on this, and has worked with us and worked out a wage package, which, uh, it has felt, uh, addresses the fact that some police officers get a Quinn Bill incentive and some won't. This is literally one of those arrangements where nobody left the table completely happy, and that by definition is a good compromise. Now, I'd be happy to answer questions, but I, I would remind you that this is, you know, it, it's considered to be death, literally, to stand here before town meeting and say, "You can only do this or that." Normally, it's a very poor thing to say for a presenter, because the spirit of New England Town Meeting is independence, and if I say this or that, somebody else is gonna invent a third way. But because of the way this is structured, this is one of those rare occasions when I must say that. Uh, if somebody liked the Quinn Bill but didn't like taking the chief out of civil service, or vice versa, you can't diddle with a deal. It's the deal or no deal, and, and that is your choice. I mean, you can have a deal or no deal, and the, the resolution, if there's no deal, is that the collective bargaining agreement collapses, and we go back to the table and have at it again, and I, I don't think anybody can predict what the outcome of that sort of dynamic is. We heartily recommend that the town meeting adopt this motion, committing us to go and get the appropriate legislation to take the chief out of civil service. The rest of the department will remain in civil service, only the chief will be, uh, out of civil service and will be selected based on the usual management criteria for a department head, which will certainly include, uh, being a police officer and having adequate skills in that regard. And I would suggest, in my view at least, that that can be better determined, uh, than by a paper, solely by a paper test. Uh, Fred Rensselaer, uh, who is not a, uh, citizen, registered to vote and so forth, is here, and if the meeting wants to, him to ask any questions, I will then ask the moderator to allow, to have you vote to allow him to speak. He's brought a union attorney along, in case there are any legal questions that she might have to help with, uh, Tom, uh, Tom. Oh. Mike Callahan. I, I should've had my cheat sheet for when I was introducing people. Mike Callahan has also read the agreement, is ready to answer any questions. But I, frankly, I hope we don't get into that sort of thing, because the, the principle I'm laying before you is very simple. Uh, we either have a deal with both components, or we don't in the end. If I can't answer any questions, I'll be happy to. Please vote for this. Thank you.
Comments from the Finance Committee, please. Mr. Prendeville?
I guess it's all or nothing. The Finance Committee heartily recommends that the town vote for this civil service Quinn Bill. Last year, the sense of the town legislature view was to take this back to negotiations, and Mr. Hunter has just reported that there have been successful negotiations. Both sides have had, have given up something, both sides have gained something. We heartily support it.
Black.
David Black. There we go. David Black, 237 Central Street. I want to, uh, echo, uh, Mr. Prendeville's comments. Uh, I want to thank and commend, uh, the police union and, uh, the town management for taking, uh, the direction from, uh, last year's town meeting, taking this back to collective bargaining, and coming up with a good agreement. I urge everyone to vote for this.
Mr. Katie?
Well, you don't have my, you've made three people upset, I think. You've made the, uh, the management didn't get what they want, the reunion didn't get what they wanted, and the voters didn't get what they wanted. The voters voted to, years ago, to keep the, uh, chief as a civil servant, and, uh, the town voted that as a separate item, and, uh, didn't realize that that was part of a bargaining chip that you were allowed to bring in, uh, had, having brought it to the people before, without, uh, any notice to us, uh, other than, you know, here it is, guys. Um, don't like those type of tactics. Uh, there are probably a few other people, but, well, you know, I'd rather see a two-person skull be brought in as two individual skulls, and let them compete head-to-head, and see which one would win.
Skulls, in this case, is a rowing term, I'm assuming. Any other comment? Seeing no one standing, we'll vote. Uh, this just requires a majority vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay? Motion carries. Article Six, dealing with the Memorial Library implementation. Mr. Hunter moves that the town raise and appropriate $80,031 to be expended by the town manager for increased library staff, building maintenance, and materials budget for the Memorial Library as listed in the article. Do I hear a second? Moved and seconded, Mr. Hunter.
You saw this slide before. We are back, uh, to seek funds, as I indicated in the overall presentation. When we add people, add a new initiative to the municipal budget, we put it first in a warrant article before we fold it into the base budget. Uh, you're all aware, I'm sure, that we authorized the construction of a new library, and we're fortunate enough to get a state grant in that regard, in the round numbers of about $2 million, where the town is contributing in round numbers of about $4 million. And those of you who have, uh, hopefully weren't driving and had a chance to look at your car window when you went through town center, or have been around town hall, now can see the full outline of what that building is gonna be, since, I'm not sure you call it framed in anymore when it's all steel, but in any event, the outline of the building is there. And you can see or sense the fact that the new library will have just about three times as much space as the old library. So it certainly wouldn't be surprising for me to suggest to you, as was outlined in the presentations last year, that it's going to require some additional staffing. We've got, I think it's two and a quarter additional people, uh, some additional, uh, maintenance, janitorial type of activity, and some additional incidentals. The third line on this slide, additional materials budget, really should've said more books. Uh, those of you who followed library discussions will remember that the state library overseers, I've forgotten the official name, uh, require that you spend 15% of a library budget to actually buy books, novel idea. Uh, and when we raise the overall budget of the library, then we have to raise the book budget, which of course is exactly what they had in mind. And the $19,000 will probably not be a, uh, an additional person, but additional hours of existing people, or contracted, uh, janitorial services. This sum is intended to run the library for when it opens in approximately November till the end of the fiscal year, so it's not quite a full fiscal year's appropriation, so there will be, uh, some additional, uh, bump up next year. Uh, I'm sure you would all agree with me that we have a tremendous library. You know, if, uh, if my business could show a curve like this, uh, that's circulation, I guess that's as close as a library comes to a profit or a business gauge. Um, I was reminded that the flattish section in the middle there wasn't really so much the library's fault, but that during that period of time, town hall, which was next door, was all torn up, and there was no place to park to get to the library. But, uh, look at this, uh, this curve going right up out of the roof, which certainly is the answer to those people who were concerned about, uh, the need to have libraries in the cyber age. And indeed, I assumed, when the library moved down to the old hardware store, into rather cramped, uh, quarters, but certainly are getting by, that their circulation would stabilize, and indeed is still going up. Now, I heartily recommend that you vote these additional funds to appropriately staff and operate this wonderful new facility that we hope coming online in November of 1998. And I would pass to Bob Ferrer, with moderator's permission, the chairman of library trustees, since I don't really have anywhere near as much to do with the library as he does, and he led the campaign to get you to approve it, so it's only appropriate that he speak to the staff and question at this point. Bob?
Thank you, Doree. Um, I'm here for just two reasons, and I'm gonna cover it briefly. Uh, first is just to provide a brief summary of where we are in the library, uh, expansion. Uh, Doree gave you some of the high points, I can go a little, one layer below that. And second, to provide support for the modest budget increase that's being requested here in Article Six. Uh, this will allow us for the proper operation of that beautiful new facility. Now, two years ago, when this town meeting endorsed going forward on the library expansion, we stated an operating budget increase of about 15% would be needed when the new facility opened. Well, that time is, is now at hand. So, yeah. So what's being requested in Article Six is almost exactly what was publicly projected two years ago. I even brought the same slides that we showed two years ago, so this is more economy, I'm recycling the slides. Yeah, um, but I, just let me cover the high points here. On April 2nd, 1996, this town meeting voted quite overwhelmingly to, uh, go ahead with the new library. Uh, that was followed, uh, some, a month or so later, it was actually May 7th, the town override, uh, vote was held, that was passed by 62%, and we thanked the town for that kind of support. Um, then finally, and Doree already alluded to it, on, uh, September 19th, we had that joyous news that the state approved our construction grant of over $2 million. By the way, we've already been receiving a lot of that money, so that's not like you get it after construction, we're getting it while we go. Uh, anyway, after that, uh, state grant was approved, it set off the, the round of detail planning, which resulted in a bid package, which was released on schedule. Uh, that bid was awarded on May 15th to Zambornati Construction Company, and I'll tell you, we couldn't be more happy with them. They're a terrific builder, they're on schedule, they do business well. Mr. Zambornati, the owner, is on site every day, so it's, it's a very good arrangement. Um, and finally, when we presented this to you, um, two years ago, this, you can see we were projecting a much later opening, while the bid package and, and the whole process allowed for a much more ambitious schedule, and as Doree mentioned, we are now planning an early November opening. So that's why we come before you, to get the staff to open that building properly. Once again, this is the, the only other slide I'm gonna show you, it's also from two years ago, and this is where we talked about the 15% increase. By the way, the, uh, behind this number, the selectmen, the, the Finance Committee, the town officials, looked at a lot of numbers to, to make up that, but basically it came up to the 15% there. The actual details are a little different, in fact, the first three bullets are a little less, and as Doree mentioned, the staff were coming out to 2.25. Uh, and let me just explain the 2.2 and a quarter staff that we were proposing. One and a half of it is really for an additional circulation desk person. If you recall, we, we have, we're now on two floors, not one, we've got a lot more space to cover, so we simply need one more position just to patrol the area, and, uh, keep an eye on the area. Uh, that's one 40-hour position, but since the library's open 60 hours a week, we need one and a half positions, so that accounts for one and a half of it. Another half is a young adult, uh, person, a programming person. If you recall, that's the, the group that is most underserved in, in our, our library as it was and as it is now, so we really wanna step up young adult programming, so that's a half a young adult person. And then finally, there's a quarter of a person to just shell the additional books. Uh, Doree also showed you that circulation chart. Well, that's turnover, and somebody's gotta get those books back on the shelves. Um, and the other item, uh, not shown here, is the increase in maintenance, but that's in the warrant article, that's the $19,000. Uh, finally, I believe this represents good fiscal sense. Uh, I think we have a, a very good design which optimize, or minimizes the additional staff that's required. You know, this, for the size of building, to pick up only two and a quarter people, I think represents very sound planning. Finally, I'd, uh, tell you that I think we've fulfilled both the spirit and the letter of the commitments that were made two years ago to the, to this group and to the town, and, uh, I request that you support this article. Thank you.
From the Finance Committee, please? The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. From the voters? I see nobody standing. So we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article Six, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay? Motion carries unanimously. Article Seven. Dealing with capital improvement, 17 Woodbury Lane reuse study. Ms. Tavonier moves that the town raise and appropriate $20,000 to be expended by the town manager for professional services, for identification, evaluation, and estimating implementation costs of reuse options for the town-owned structure at 17 Woodbury Lane. Do I hear a second? Moved and seconded, Mrs. Tavonier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, the article requests $20,000 for a professional study for the reuse options of 17 Woodbury Lane. Uh, if you will recall, that's the Valencourt property that we bought in town meeting two years ago as part of the library expansion project. Uh, from this first slide, you can see the bird's eye view that the use around this house was critical to the expansion of the library in the parking access, uh, and parking lots that were required. Uh, when this, uh, vote was taken in 1996, uh, it was planned that the building would be retained for a town purpose, which was unidentified at that time. Uh, the building became vacant last November, and now we must determine what the best and most cost-effective use is of that property. While the house is located in the Acton Center Historic District, very little of it is authentic, as this slide shows. It has been added onto many times and has been cut up, uh, inside and out. Uh, the interior is not in very good shape. I suspect many of you are curious about what it looks like inside, I was. Uh, it's not in good shape cosmetically, which is not a serious problem, but it's also not in shape, uh, good shape structurally. There's considerable rot in the support beams and the cellar. Uh, there's lead paint throughout the house, as well as handicap accessibility issues that must be addressed if the house is to be used for a public purpose. Uh, the determination of a constructive use for this property, if any, is really beyond our capabilities in-house. Due to the Americans with Disabilities Act and numerous Massachusetts building codes, uh, issues, we anticipate that a number of variances from the state will be required, and that's why we're requesting this $20,000. It will be used to hire a consultant, to examine the structure thoroughly, to determine the existing condition, uh, to detail the regulatory hurdles that must be overcome, and to develop some suggested options for its reuse. And lastly, if there are options, to prepare schematic diagrams. A cost estimate of any reuse option will also be calculated by the consultant and brought back to a future town meeting, should that be, um, the decision made. Thank you.
From the Finance Committee? The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. From the, uh, town meeting members, Dr. Donald?
I have a question regarding the age of the house.
Oh, gosh, the one question. (laughing). Mary, how did you do that? Uh, wait a minute, maybe this picture has the date on it? Oh, I guess not. Is anybody here from the history? Dean, of course. 1840, just that original front piece. 1840, sorry.
All the comments? Seeing no one standing, we will vote. Gotcha. Did you want to speak? Go right ahead.
Charles Rogers, uh, 6 Haley Lane. I was wondering, is there any, uh, thoughts as to what use this, uh, property was gonna be used for? Are you literally gonna, can we just tear it down? I mean, is that, save us $20,000 if there's, I mean, is there a, any ideas as to what it might be used for?
Well, uh, tearing it down is not first on the list, because it is in the historic district, uh, so we certainly want to explore any option that would at least retain the historical, uh, aspect of it. Um, it may in the end be impossible to use for public purposes or for housing, uh, for the several code, uh, issues, and, you know, ultimately have to be torn down, but it, the purchase of it was absolutely essential for the expansion of the library. Uh, we had hoped we could use it for some public purpose, but the cost of doing that will be determined by the consultant, and that's a decision that will be made here.
Any other comment? You have to come to a microphone, sir.
Yeah, I mean, we-
Yes, could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Robert Hendry of Taylor Road. Uh, we appear to be voting on a large number of spending, as of course we would at a town meeting. Um, is there any reason why we have to spend this $20,000 this year?
Well, the house is sitting there vacant, and, uh, we don't think that's a very good situation for any property. Uh, and I think it's best for us to move forward, uh, as soon as possible, so that we can come back in the future with some kind of a recommendation.
But, I mean, any budgetary, uh, any budgetary discussion is a question of putting a limited amount of money to a certain number of places. I mean, is there any reason why this year is the time that we need to-
This was selected as a priority by the, uh, staff through the budgeting process and the selectmen, and it, the $20,000 is within the 14-some million dollars that was allotted to the selectmen to prioritize.
Uh, am I allowed to make a motion to table this issue?
Sure.
I make a motion to table this issue for, uh, indefinite period?
You make a motion to lay the, uh, motion on the table?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Aye.
It's non-debatable. All in favor of laying this article on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no?
No.
Motion's lost. Anybody else standing? I see, yes.
Just a question, is this, what do I do? Hello?
Speak.
Can you?[1754.91][1754.91](laughing). It seems you could study a lot of things for $20,000. How did you come up with that figure to look at a small house and figure out what you can do?
It was actually based on an estimate from an, uh, an architect that's working with the library project.
Is that the upper limit? Would it be put out to bid? So it, might it be less than that?
Yes, it would be put out to bid. Mm-hmm.
Dr. Donald?
Mary Donald, Taylor Road. Uh, I, it is an historic district, it's a 150-year-old house, and I urge everybody to vote in favor of retention of this house, uh, at least- of this house, uh, at least study it. Thank you.
Seeing no one else standing, we'll now vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Article Eight, dealing with recreation implementation. Mr. Mullen moves that the town raise and appropriate two hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars to be expended by the town manager for implementation of the Recreation Division within the Natural Resources and Cemetery Department, and for professional design services for the Morrison property. Do I hear a second? Moved and seconded. Mr. Mullen, to your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, if I may, just as a point of personal privilege, just for one moment, uh, this is my last time here. It's my first time speaking this evening. For the last eight years, I've been sitting on stage, uh, two years on this side and six years on, on that side, and, uh, have seen quite a bit, uh, occur in this hall. Uh, we started eight years ago, and we were very much, uh, in, in the realm of cutting budgets and reducing staff, and we had a zero percent increase in, in compensation. Uh, we went through a period of time where our, our coffers were more full, and sometimes those are more vexing decisions, and, uh, we moved ahead in that regard. Uh, it has been my privilege to, to serve here, and, uh, I would also encourage you all to keep involved as you do. I believe that this town is very well-run. I believe we've got excellent management. Uh, as noted by the Finance Committee Chairman and the Board of Selectment Chairman, I think we're in very strong financial shape, and, uh, and with, as manifested by our, our AA bond rating, I think we're in good shape. So with that, I'd just say thank you for the opportunity of serving, and, uh, I wish everybody good luck in the future. This is Article Eight on Recreation Implementation. I had to put up the, the tree slide that we had last time. What are we talking about here? Uh, basically, we're talking about adding a Recreation Division to the Natural Resources and Cemetery Department, which is somewhat of a reorganization. We're providing appropriate staffing and equipment for recreation programming. We're providing a higher level of maintenance for the recreation fields and playgrounds, and we're planning, uh, for the best use design of the Morrison Farm, which, uh, you all approved unanimously in acquisition last year. My presentation will be brief, but, and focused, but there will be three themes. And this is what I think has characterized the performance of the town management over the last eight years that I have been here. It's husbanding our resources, taking care of what we already own, and serving the community. The first theme is husbanding our resources. It may be a little bit difficult to read, maybe not. But just think about what has occurred over the last eight years. We start with the Ice House Pond Project. With, that was a, a festering pond. We, using town resources, we excavated that and restored it as a recreational resource. The loan from Ice House Pond has been used up at the playful fields at Nara. The next thing is, is Nara. And there, the gravel from the ground was excavated and, and used to pay for the construction and the, and the seeding of, uh, of the property up at Nara. Thirteen thousand cubic yards of the loan that came out of Ice House Pond was used for that loan. That stimulated the, the reformation of the Recreation Commission and the Land Stewardship Committee. The Recreation, uh, survey that we did in those years conveyed a, a sense that we had to improve the maintenance of our property and take care of what we already own. The Land Stewardship Committee had, does that as their duty. That stimulated the acquisition of some land that, uh, was available from the Boy Scouts called Camp Acton. That parcel of land was acquired and is now valuable open space. That parcel of land is now cared for by the Land Stewardship Committee. The money that was used from Camp Acton, we supplied for a self-help grant. That self-help grant came in, and we were able to use that money in order to pay for part of the Morrison land purchase. The Camp Act, and rejuvenating Ice House Pond is an integral part of the Morrison land development. All of a sudden, we've come back full circle. The, the resources used at Ice House Pond stimulated Nara, forming citizens groups to, to help out, using the money from Camp Acton to assist in, in, uh, the acquisition of the Morrison Farm. We truly respect the resources we have in town and try to use them beneficially. We take care of what do we own. In a nineteen ninety-six survey of recreation needs, people said, "Please take care of the property that we already own while you're asking us to go out and ac- acquire new property." Very briefly, I'd like to think, ask you to think of these as before and after. Before we owned the arboretum, it was, uh, those of you who have been around a lo- long time know that it was, uh, just a piece of land there. Think of what it is now, where I went there just the other day with my five-year-old and trotted through there, and a beautiful spot even in winter, and how glorious it is in spring. Ice House Pond before, it was a smelly pond. Now, it is, and I took my son there to smell it. No, I, I didn't. Uh, and now it's, uh, less smelly. It's a beautiful spot. And that's the standard we apply, less smell. Gardner Playground and Jones Playground met a critical standard, which is citizens groups formed to assist us in raising funds and developing the plans for that. Two A and Twenty-seven is, uh, is sitting up there now, and we've, uh, been able to, uh, cut out another soccer field, and we're irrigating that field. Nara is the crown jewel, of course. And North Acton Recreation Area, our, our architects say that they know of no other project that has been able to be undertaken, certainly in Massachusetts, almost positively in New England, and maybe around the country, with so little resources, dollar-wise, to create such a jewel. And then the Morrison Farm. Now we've taken that Morrison Farm and Ice House Pond and merged the two, before and after. These are what we call taking care of what we already own. Finally, the third theme is serving the community. Now, we've made these investments. We've made these purchases. Now it is time to operational, operationalize our investments. I'll say operationalize, that's a, if you do spell check, that's not in there, but anyway. The program is as follows. Uh, we're going to, uh, hire a Recreation Director, a Secretary, two full-time groundskeepers, and some seasonal workers. Uh, these will be, uh, used to develop programming, most especially at Nara and, uh, the, the Morrison, uh, Farm area when it comes online. In terms of recreation equipment, we have to make some investments in order to maintain these things. In terms of recreation land design, this is, uh, money that is set up to, to try to come up with a best use study for the Morrison land. The engineering is going to be for site survey, topographical map preparation, land use design, and environmental permitting. What is going to happen as a result of all of these things? We're going to begin programming for all town-owned recreation areas. We still have and maintain strong communication and coordination with Community Ed. As a member, matter of fact, as far as the, uh, the newly-formed Recreation Commission, the Director of Community Ed is an ex officio member of the Recreation Commission, making sure that there's appropriate links. We're going to certainly try to do what you asked us to do in the survey, which is to improve the maintenance of our existing resources. We've stimulated and reinvigorated the Recreation Commission that existed for many years before, and we're planning the prudent best use for the Morrison Farm. In sum, we seek to husband the precious resources of Acton. We seek to value and care for the blessings we already have, and we seek to activate our investments and improve the quality of life of our community. Uh, I hope you'll join me and the selectmen in supporting this article.
From the Finance Committee, please? The Finance Committee supports the adoption of this article. From the, uh, town meeting members? Robert Wood- Uh, Bob, sorry. I think you were first. Go ahead, sir.
Robert Wood, Forty-Seventh Parker Street in Acton. I'd like to ask, who will the Recreation Director report to? Will it be the town manager or the Recreation Commission? The Recreation Director will report to the newly head, new head of the Natural Resources and Cemetery Department, Tom Tidman.
Mr. Grits?
Uh, yeah, Martin Grits. All I want to say is, as long as you promise never to seek to operationalize anything ever again, I'll vote for this article.
He will never do it again.
Some people say I'd do anything for a vote. All right, I will. Never again.
Mr. Evans?
Bob Evans of, uh, Old Meadow Lane. I would like to move an amendment to reduce the amount by two thousand two hundred and forty dollars. And if it's seconded, I'll tell you why.
That's an offer that is hard to refuse, but I don't give anybody seconding it. Do I hear a second to Mr. Evans' amendment? Okay, now.
The two thousand two hundred and forty dollars, as you can see, is very close to ten percent. I rounded it off so as not to cause the moderator any difficulty with his arithmetic.
But, but it isn't close to ten percent.
One percent? Well, all right.
That's, that's right. See, I didn't have trouble with my arithmetic. I think somebody else did, Bob.
Well, then we'll, I'll, I should have had it, made it bigger, but I'll leave it alone. My, my basic concern and the reason for, for doing this was the Finance Committee's report at the beginning of the meeting, which the moderator unfortunately didn't ask for any comments on, or I'd have spoken then, blithely tells us that we can expect to see our taxes rise on our houses by five or more percent per year for the next five years without considering operational overrides. And then they included, although I didn't hear it this evening, in their written material saying, "Oh, yes, we expect to have an operational override next year." And then if you look at the yellow piece of paper, they're approving the expenditures of almost all of these monies, and the question is, where does it stop? It doesn't seem to me that we are being provided with a kind of guidance that we need. Yes, we've, we've heard lots of information, but are we really prepared to see five and six percent or more increases in taxes year after year? If you look carefully at, at the, uh, the slide that Dory had earlier, you'll have noticed that the last couple of years, total expenditures were rising much faster than the cost of living, much faster certainly than, than two and a half, and with free cash falling, the question is, what is the town going to do? And I don't think we're, it's being well-served by sort of blithely saying, "Well, let's plunge ahead this year because we've got enough free cash to cover everything, and then we'll start worrying about where we go next year." And, uh, this was intended to be a modest way of suggesting that we need to stop and think about these things. I, I hesitate, and I guess I'll promise not to do that, to try and reduce each article by some amount, but it seems to me that unless you do that, then you've got to have a Finance Committee, a Selectman, and a School Committee coming before you with budgets which, on the one hand, remember all the wonderful things they would like to do, but on the other hand, remember that we can't afford to have these kinds of tax increases, and they offer us no alternative.
We're now discussing the amendment only, not the main article. We have amendment, an amendment in front of us to reduce the, uh, sum of, uh, the motions number by two thousand two hundred and forty dollars. So discussion on that alone. Mr. Mullen, would you like to discuss it, or anybody?
I'm a little bit, uh, nonplussed. I, I'm not sure where we would cut. I, I understand the point, and I don't think it speaks to this particular article. Um, and just, uh, if I may step in there, the, this fits within the, the, uh, process that we've set up, the Acton Leadership Group to plan, and indeed, uh, as we go through these, the course every year, you establish budget priorities and attempt to live within the allocation of funds that are allocated, uh, to each of the, the budgets. Uh, so this is certainly within that plan. Uh, the second point I'd just like to make with respect to this is that we still maintain our desire and our goal, as we told you two years ago, I guess it was two years ago, that we're going to try to make sure that operations, uh, at, now, North Acton Recreation Area are, uh, on a, at least a break-even basis, and indeed try to, to perhaps generate some sort of a fund balance to, to take care of, uh, the property up there through its own revenue stream.
Other comments on the amendment? Sir, the gentleman at the back?
Yes, my name is Arkady Kenevsky. I'm Nineteen John Swift. Uh, I have a general question to the Finance Committee, which I guess I expected to provide some guidance in terms of, uh, uh, the spending and the growth for the future, both the revenue and expenditure. And, you know, the published report, I see the discrepancy which seemed to be growing, uh, you know, from the last year to this year, and I was wondering what kind of guidance do they provide, you know, expect to provide to us in terms of resolving this issue, uh, for, you know, this fiscal year and future fiscal year, because it's, you know, even on the current bill, let's say, that it would be thirty percent over the five-year increase of expenditure and-
Excuse me, sir. I think what we're discussing is an amendment now to cut this number by two thousand plus dollars. I don't really see how your comment relates specifically to that, and that's what we have in front of us now. Can you somehow relate your question to this amendment?
Yes, I would like to get a guidance from the Finance Committee to get a general, uh, general guidance in terms of how to balance expenditure versus, uh, the revenue, uh, as it affects specifically this budget item, but in general, uh, all other budget items which we'll be voting on in the future.
Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I'm somewhat nonplussed also by the, the turn of this discussion. Uh, I hope nobody in this audience thought I blithely informed you of the, uh, increases in your taxes. If you did, I apologize to you. I meant it very sincerely. I also find it very interesting that, yes, we alerted you to our analysis. It may not be what you like, and I'm, again, sorry, but so be it. You, we, the legislature in this room, a year or two ago, voted, I won't say blithely, to approve Nara. Now we come up to the stage, we've put all this money into Nara, we're talking about two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, which I think is less than, uh, somebody could help me, fifteen, twenty percent of the total cost, less than ten percent. Why did you dig this big hole or have this big hole unless you wanted us to use it? Now each one of your questions, again, if I may go on this turner, when we vote something here, it's "we." It's not "they," it's not "them," it's "we." We voted Nara. We voted Morrison. Now it's coming down to the time we're going to use it. Now, if you don't want to use it, don't nickel-and-dime it to death, wipe it out, instead of coming down by one percent. I'm sure he didn't mean that. Uh, if, if you don't want Nara, uh, I think you got to really think about it. But I'm, I'm sorry if somebody thinks that we, in our analysis, tried to belittle, uh, the information we gave you.
I'll recognize the gentleman at the back. On, on the amendment now. We're speaking on the amendment only.
That's right.
Go ahead.
Uh, my name is John Boddenhausen. I'm on Central Street, and the question was about the, um, salary for the Recreation Director, which was, I think, fifty-five thousand dollars, and that seems like a lot of money.
I'm sorry, we're, we're-
But, but the, the point is that the one percent, the two thousand two hundred and forty dollars, I think could easily come out of that, and you could still get, um, a good Recreation Director for, you know, fifty-two, five.
Other comments on the amendment, please? Seeing no one stand, yes, gentleman at the front?
I'd like to call the question.
Don't need to, no one else is standing.
Fine.
We'll vote. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Oppose, say no.
No.
The amendment is lost. We're now back, uh, discussing the unamended motion. Ms. Williams?
Mickey, Mickey Williams, Horseshoe Drive here in Acton. Um, I just have a question or a concern and, or maybe a comment. Um, about ten years ago, the Recreation Commission was subsumed into Community Ed, um, because they felt that the duties of the Recreation Commission at that time could be better served under Community Ed. Um, while you say that you are coordinating with Community Ed, I guess I would urge you to use Community Ed as much as you can to keep the cost of maintaining these programs. The section where duties will include establishing and overseeing recreation programs, scheduling athletic events, programming and coordinating amphitheater, amphitheater events, seems to me the types of jobs that our Community Ed program could easily handle, and so I would urge you to use them as much as you can to help keep the cost down.
I think, I think, Mr. Moderator, just a comment there?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, that's a very valid point. Uh, I don't know, Bill, if, Ryan, if you want to comment on that, but, uh, we are very conscious of-
of coordinating and not using duplication of services. Community ed does not want to get involved in the maintenance of land, and the programming up at NARA will be fairly self-contained. But where, to the extent there can be overlap and use of resources, we are certainly seeking to do that.
Mr. Cadillac.
Yes, Charles Cadillac, Paul River Road. This was probably one of the articles I gave the most thought before this town meeting to see whether, how I feel about it, and I'll explain in a second where I came down on it, but before I do that, I have a question. You did mention, Bill, that there is some hope of some revenue stream coming in from NARA. Can you give us a little more information on that?
This is basically two lines. We're still talking about projections here, which is why, these are basically, the blue line was the projections that we gave two years ago, and that's taken directly from the operating book that we passed out, and that shows these first two years basically were donations, which caused the spike in revenues. The contract that we had has taken us out another year beyond what we had projected here. As you recall, we had a choice in the contract of one year, three years, or five years, and ended up being a one-year contract, but through negotiations, we had to go out for essentially two years. So our revenue from this is being pushed out one year. Based upon the revised cash flows, which was done by taking a survey of all of the comparable resources, ponds, and other competing neighborhood facilities, you see that the cash flow does start out slower, it goes higher, and ends up being higher up here. So basically, if you push this out one year, we're basically on the same level we are, other than the one-year delay. We still are seeking the donations to cover some of the expenditures, and that's where the difference is right now.
Before...
The zero line, so if you look at this in 1901, we're projecting, I'm sorry, 1901.
You have a year 2,000 problem, Bill?
I'm going to operationalize that, but anyway. This is where we break even, and we seek to go positive after that.
Now, if I can try and understand that, when you say "break even," is that income from the whatever cost of going to that area offsetting whatever the cost of running it?
Yes.
So is part of this that we are being asked to vote for the expense side of that?
Well, not that I understand.
Well, the $200,000, these people, the recreation director, the groundskeeper, the $225,000, I mean, am I interpreting this correctly, that all of that will be offset by the income, and then we'll actually make a profit?
Yes.
So this is a temporary cost to the town for the next three years?
That is what our plan is, and we hope to carry it out.
Okay. Well, I was kind of hoping that that's how it is, which is why I haven't been here vociferously arguing to vote this down earlier, because I do think this is a rather substantial increase in the town budget, which, as Bob Evans has pointed out, we probably cannot afford, but it's temporary, hopefully. There are a couple of other reasons why I'm going to vote for this, and I like to explain them, because that may surprise some people. First of all, I really appreciate having this as a separate article, and as Dore explained earlier, having any and all such add-on programs, personnel additions, and whatever, come-to-town meeting as separate warrant articles, so we can look at them and vote for them independently of the base municipal budget. It's a much better process. We understand what we're doing, and we can make a decision. I appreciate that, and that's one reason, that's a favorable thing. The other thing, and this is kind of, if the moderator will indulge me, not completely within the scope of this article, but most of it is, is a comment that's kind of long overdue from me, which is that the municipal side of this town has done a remarkable job of managing its budget, returning each and every year substantial amount of money, unspent money to free cash, being somewhat unique in that, and you can figure out what that And I think they deserve our vote of confidence that they will manage this fund effectively again, and that's a reason I'm going to vote for it, because they have demonstrated that the line budget, which I stood here and argued against, the bottom-line budget, I should say, which I stood here and argued against many years ago, they have managed quite effectively and did not turn out the way I had feared, and for that, that's a positive thing, so for that, I think we should give them the opportunity to set up this for the next few years and see it cancel itself out through revenue. Last, I think the municipal budget has been the, you know, Cinderella of this process for quite a while, and deserve a little boost once in a while, and this is a good time as any for us to do that. So I'm going to vote yes.
Lady at the back.
Hi, I'm Susan E. Frame. I live on Arlington Street, and I just have a question as to why this developed in the way it did. I don't understand why the coordination can't take place within the Department for Community Education, which already is used to coordinating things, and this would obviate the need for coordination between these two agencies, which are really, they're going to grow up parallel to each other, and I don't see why the grounds part of it couldn't have been kept in with the, within the Natural Resources and Cemetery Department, where it certainly seems to belong. So it just seems like it might be more expensive to have a separate recreation department within this groundskeeping organization, and I'd like to understand why this wasn't initially integrated into community ed, because I don't really have the background to know.
Mr. Moan.
I'd like to invite Bill, Ryan to comment on the community ed part of it. Thank you, Bill. I think, as many of you probably know, the community ed program really comes under the regional school district, and actually, many years ago, 1975, 1976, I think Vanetta Hunter was on our first community ed advisory committee, but we came to town meeting much like this for about a $2,500 appropriation originally, and then I think our original budget was around $35,000, and now it's about $1,002,000, and it is all self-sustaining. But the community ed programs are really school-based programs. They really operate out of the five elementary schools, the junior high school, the high school, so whether it's adult education or recreation programs that we run, but that operate out of gyms or the pool, the fieldhouse, preschool, extended day, all of those programs are school-based programs. And I think what is being attempted here is the commitment that the town meeting has made the last few years, particularly in terms of the NARA site, in terms of trying to develop programs now in that area. My hope would be that we can work together. We certainly have a great vehicle in terms of our interaction that goes out to all residents four times a year. There's no reason the recreation department can't use that vehicle, have their own space in it, that we can work together in terms of registrations to reduce administrative costs. Certainly, that would be our hope, and I think this is a terrific project, and I hope it goes forward. I think it'd be great for the town.
Gentleman at the front. Yes, sir.
Steve Olson, 11 Wingate Lane. I recommend the article as presented, and the speaker before me discussed one issue that I'd like to stress. I happen to be this year's chairman of the board for the Council on Aging, and I believe that it's very important to realize that a lot of this recreation land has to be given to all of the residents of the town, and the seniors are an increasing population of residents, and actually, for senior retention in the town, it's wise to give seniors places to do things. We don't have them all nearby for them to walk in, but on the other hand, we have a lot of land around here that, if it was in suitable shape, could be walked in by seniors. There's some land nearby the senior, the senior center off the Audubon Hill that is in not sufficient shape for the use of seniors in general, and I'd like to encourage that we don't center this around budgetary focus around the schools, and actually center it around a town-wide recreational need, and to possibly even lobby at this microphone to start thinking about our seniors, because we're all going to be some of those, so.
Seeing no one else standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we adjourn this meeting until 7:00 PM tomorrow night in this hall.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of adjourning until 7:00 tomorrow night, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We didn't get to your people. I was looking for you earlier to introduce them, and John couldn't find you. I'm sorry. I really apologize.
That's all right. I was waiting for you to give me a signal, but that's all right. That's no problem.
I apologize. They will not be here tomorrow night, I take it?
No, no, that's just, it was one workshop that they signed up for.